Everything was shut down, and I really appreciate you working with us through that challenging time to get this complete. I hope the council finds this result, the result of this study insightful. If you'd like to know more, we can provide the full report to you after this presentation. I believe this report will help the housing trust in our town understand our housing needs so we can move forward with our mission to encourage increased diversity of housing stock, including year-round rental opportunities, and support and develop senior housing and opportunities to age in place. So with that, I will introduce Annette Born and Bryce.
Kelly.
What's the last name?
Kelly.
Kelly, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, thank you all very, very much for inviting us here tonight. Working with the Little Compton Housing Trust has been really very, very easy, a very enthusiastic group and clearly committed to the town and to the town's housing needs and really community needs, I'd say. So just, this is what I'm going to go through as quickly as possible tonight. There are other documents that we will make available fully to the town council. The housing trust already has these documents. Those include the full report of the stakeholder interviews, as well as a very lengthy output from the survey, which numbers over 100, might be closer to 200 pages because it involves all of the graphs that come with it and all of the commentary that came with it, as well as the presentation that we made to the housing trust a few months ago, which really go into more depth about the survey results. So to begin, Carol, the next slide, just very briefly, for those of you who know, who don't know, Housing Works Rhode Island is a community partner of Roger Williams University. We've been around since 2004, but was integrated into the university in 2014. We're located on their Providence campus, and we really look at housing through the lens of what is called now the social determinants of health. So it includes not only just housing and affordability, but housing and health, housing and education, housing and economic development. We like to say that opportunity really begins at a person's front door. Many health outcomes are actually connected more to where you live than to your genetic predisposition. We are best known for producing an annual housing fact book, which takes a look at the state's affordability, regional affordability, and then all 39 cities and towns, and it is available on our website. Our website also includes other publications that we've done, as well as housing glossary and other information that you might find helpful about housing. Next slide. So as I explained, our contracted work really grew out of your comprehensive plan, which really sought to understand your local housing needs and included the intention to look at year-round housing rental opportunities and really suggested an action item of conducting a survey, especially with looking at the need for senior housing, as well as affordability. So the work really kicked off with a series of local stakeholder interviews. I conducted 10 interviews with an agreed-upon list from the housing trust, not just members of the housing trust, but other leaders in your community, like Mr. Mushin. There was a survey that was conducted for a pretty long time throughout the entire school year, and I will just say, participation was amazing. We went on earlier this year to do a survey for the town of Warren that was very similar. I mean, yours became a template, but theirs was a little different, and you exceeded their participation, even though obviously they are a much larger town. So great, great outreach. Isabel Mathia did a fabulous job. And then we produced the summary report that went along with this work. Next slide. So as I was saying, healthy, affordable homes create a path to opportunity. The location of a home connects to all of the social determinants of health domains that you see on the screen: health, education, the social connections in your community, your economic stability, and your neighborhood and environment, which is sometimes called the built environment. And then the condition of your home, you know, affects your physical health, which then can affect how you perform in school or your job. Next slide. So these next few slides are literally from our 2022 housing fact book. If you go to the website and look for the fact book, these are the things that you will see on the page that is for Little Compton. Every page starts with population and households. So you all probably know that you're the second smallest in the state, only New Shoreham has fewer people. Your household income, however, is the fifth highest. So, and you actually have a balance, given the town's size, of some rental housing. So there are actually towns with less rental housing. Next slide. But of course, your housing costs, which is what more or less brought us here tonight, is really very, very high. And I mean, it's high because of good reasons, right? It's a beautiful place to live, it's got a wonderful seashore, but it has become really unmanageable for those who just want to live here year-round as a community member. It is the fourth highest income that is needed to afford a home, and you've experienced a 48% increase over the last five years. Those are numbers that are inflation-adjusted to 2021. So, you know, unfortunately, there isn't enough rental data to really make those comparisons for rent. And for all of you, I think this median single-family home price comes from the Rhode Island Real Estate Multiple Listing Service. Bryce will get in a little bit later. You all don't have a lot of home sales every year. So the median means whatever happened in that year. If you had, what have they had, over like 20 home sales in a year or something?
You know, over the four-year period, it was close to 90.
All right, so over a four-year period, you had 90 sales. So if you have 20 to 25 sales in a year, that's a lot. So, and if people are living here for a long time, those aren't the houses that are selling, right? So I know that it's kind of shocking to think 797,000, but that is an annual look at what that number is, and it can go up, it can go down.
But like, excuse me, does like a million-dollar sale skew the average?
Well, no, a median, so median is different than average. A million-dollar sale would certainly skew an average, but a median means there were, you know, that many below and that many above. So, anyway, so next, next slide. So, you know, this leads to, you know, what we call an affordability gap, because if you look at what the bars to the right tell you, is that if you looked at private sector wage for this county, renter household income for the county, and Rhode Island minimum wage, and what those incomes would allow for an affordable housing cost, you'd be in the neighborhood of $1,300 to $1,200. And, you know, to pay a mortgage on a home that's $797,000 would be in excess of, you know, $4,000. So the chart on the right talks about what is called cost burden. A cost burden, so financial recommendations would be for your budget to be no more than 30% of your gross income to be consumed by your housing costs. And for an owner, housing costs would include your principal, interest, taxes, and insurance. For a renter, it would include rent plus your key utilities, so your electricity, heat, hot water. According to the census estimate, you have approximately 416 households who are exceeding that 30% recommended limit. That means that they may be choosing what groceries they're buying, which many of us are now anyway. They may be choosing to not fulfill a prescription, they may have to make harder choices around childcare, but that is an estimated number. And the way it actually breaks down is a significant number of those are owner households, and, you know, from what we've seen generally, that often can refer to older households who, even despite having a mortgage paid off, those costs of taxes and insurance can actually sometimes bring them into a cost burden category because they're on a fixed income. Next slide. So here we look again at, you know, the composition of your town is primarily single-family homes, but obviously some of those are rental. We get into the fact that you really don't have any water or sewer infrastructure, which leads to, you know, not having any multifamily by right, which is not unusual for many of the towns in Rhode Island that don't have water and sewer. You know, your building permit activity last year was 13, single-family homes. And again, in the upper right here, we do see another estimate of those cost burden households. Again, that number is hovering around 500. This is a slightly different metric. This metric actually looks at HUD and census data combined. And you actually have used Building Homes Rhode Island, you know, to accomplish some affordable housing goals. I, you know, when I moved here to Rhode Island in 2004, Little Compton only had two units. So I can tell you now, I live in the city of Cranston, we have used $0 for Building Homes Rhode Island, which makes me very, very upset. And I can say now, if we had, you know, quadrupled the number of our affordable housing units in Cranston, I'd be much, much happier than I am right now. So, so, and in the report that accompanies this presentation that you should all have available, and what the point that we've made to the housing trust too, is I try not to focus on the 10% number. I know that that is like the bane of the municipal life here in Rhode Island, but housing affordability is a broader category, and it should include more things than just long-term affordable homes. It is also about starter, single-family homes, or accessory dwelling units for older family members. Next slide. And here's where I get into a little bit of my own dream for Rhode Island, informed by the fact that we have many communities here without substantial infrastructure, where I would like to see the state start to measure accomplishments in a regional way. I know that the relationship between Little Compton and Tiverton, many families have moved between those two communities back and forth. There is infrastructure at the northern end of Tiverton. The way the census sees it, Bristol and Newport counties actually form a region that gives us data that we can actually work with and measure, and we have applied that to an analysis in the housing fact book, which, when you go online and you look at it, you can see how your, how your region measures. But I think that it's, it's a promising way of looking at how we can accomplish our housing needs in a broader way, rather than just looking at municipality by municipality. But again, that is, that is a kind of a pipe dream for me right now. Next slide. So these next two slides are basically themes from the stakeholder interviews. You all know, you're just super expensive. It is a growing concern with widespread agreement, and you have many examples of community care. I was really touched by the outreach to your seniors, to those adults with children, with developmental disabilities who are aging. You have a very strong agricultural identity. I moved here from Vermont. I understand that identity, but I also understand that that can take away, or not take away, but not really complement housing needs, so that there, but there are tools that can actually blend those two identities and need. Next slide. And, you know, one of the strongest themes, and that's what we'll get more into when we get to recommendations, is to be able, for the housing trust, to be able to act immediately, which I think I understand, Mr. Moore, you just said that you just changed the charter so that the housing trust can act without town meeting, right?
But with permission of the town.
Right, 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 but that's, 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 that's still progress, right? Now they just need the money in order to be able to make those really agile development moves. The state does need to wrestle a little bit more with the needs of rural communities. I think regionalism might be a way of doing that. And there was suggestions about more public participation. Clearly, if the survey results was any indication, your community certainly has an appetite for wanting a voice. And then next steps, you know, could include more looking at tax assessment, you know, so if you start to identify homes that, you know, are undervalued, which Bryce will be looking, talking a little bit more about, but then giving the housing trust more ability to act on those homes, that might be able to move more into actual development work. And, yeah, so ADUs, I think, all right, so here we go. Survey results, and this is just a very quick overview of the survey results. The presentation we made to the housing trust was much deeper than this, and, and you'll receive that presentation, as well as the Qualtrics survey output, which, as I mentioned, is very, very long, but there's a lot to draw from there. So next slide. Who participated, it's not going to surprise you that most of the people who participated own their own property. They skewed older, and they skewed, you know, to incomes over $120,000, although there was certainly a good representation of those households between 60 and 120,000. But if part of the purpose of this survey, which was part of the purpose, was to really get to people who work here but who can't afford to live here, or people who rent here and may be in danger of not being able to live here, that is not the bulk of who responded to the survey. Although clearly the people who responded are very knowledgeable about those needs and expressed real concern about those needs. So, next slide. So 43% of the people who responded, and so I want to point out, so there were 382 total responses. It wasn't required for you to answer every single question. So each question received different numbers. So in, in statistical speak, that would be your N, right? So in this particular question, are you or anyone you know having problems with housing? Of 293 responses, 43% said yes. Of the yes responses, 93% said finding or staying a home here is one or more of their problems. There was a whole host of problems, but what, what was a constant in any grouping of those responses was the idea of actually being able to stay in their home here. Another 21% also mentioned affording essential monthly expenses. Next slide. One of the really promising questions was about accessory dwelling units. And 56% of the respondents to this particular question said maybe, and that's, that's positive. 30 households actually went on to provide contact information. Five more than that actually said yes to contact, but they didn't provide their information. So I don't know if you just put up a flyer in town and say, "If you said yes, but didn't go on to give us your information." So of those who said yes, 72%, which is not unusual, really said they would really only want the unit for somebody who is a family member or somebody who is known to them. So it might be somebody who, you know, they are related or unrelated to, but that they know them well. But actually, a quarter, nearly a quarter of the people who said yes, said really anyone who needs it. And so if you are in an activity where you are going to enact, you know, enable the trust to move on things like this, following up with those 30 households and really understanding what it would take for them, you know, actions that any of you could take. Bryce has been doing a little bit more work on different ordinances across the state, you know, tax incentives, what are some of the other, mostly tax incentives?
Yeah.
That people are doing, so.
Is the 30-year lock still in there?
So this is where we get into the discussion about the 10% versus not. I personally think this is not a use for long-term affordability. This is the kind of a housing strategy that diversifies your housing, and it fills a real need. So there are strategies that suggest that you could put some sort of a deed restriction, but it would take a mastermind legally, because you are talking about a unit that's accessory to your primary dwelling unit, and then what happens when you sell that primary dwelling unit? So, you know, different housing advocates have varying opinions. I am personally, you know, thinking that it's not worth the effort, and I think actually if we had, if we had put that into this question, you probably would see this number go down. And I don't even know what kind of tax incentive then you'd have to build into that.
But this would keep children in town. If a parent owned a house on a lot, and they were able to build an accessory dwelling unit on that lot, the children would be able to stay.
Yes, absolutely.
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa. I mean, oftentimes what happens here is that the primary owner, the older person, will move into the accessory dwelling unit and let, you know, their younger child and grandchildren, you know, occupy the main home. I know it's my own plan in order to be able to move back to Cambridge, Massachusetts, but. My daughter, my daughter doesn't know that plan yet.
I've always made the differentiation between like this sort of ADU and affordable housing is capital A, affordable housing is the 30-year, you know, you're locked in a hat, making it affordable for 30 years. And then there's lowercase a, affordable housing, which we've been used to in Little Compton, and really kind of taken advantage of for a long time. You know, you know, you've got your, your neighbor across the street who has a, a unit, and maybe they're willing to help you out a little bit, but, so anyways, thank you.
Yeah, no, I, and, you know, I get it. People are sensitive about the 10%. And, you know, just to be very frank here, you know, there are municipalities that, you know, due to their location and maybe areas where they do have infrastructure, they are under much more threat of a comprehensive permit. That is not generally the problem here. I recognize that that HUD 202, a few years ago, Laura Betancourt home, was being filed under a comprehensive permit, but I don't think it was that. It was like an aggressive comprehensive permit. It was for elderly housing, and it just needed a place, and there's no local zoning that would have permitted it. So that was the route that church community chose to take, as it is, it, you know, it wasn't used. But, anyway, okay, so, next slide. And again, this was all very positive, right? 66% of respondents agreed the town needs to find more ways to build more and different types of homes that are affordable to a wider range of people who want to live here. And I want to very specifically note, the language in that is not talking about long-term affordability. It is talking about growing your housing stock in a natural way. Could a portion of them be long-term affordable? Absolutely. But I think what I am hearing from these respondents is that, you know, they want to be able to just have more people be able to come who aren't necessarily, you know, going to be able to afford to buy an $800,000 home. Funding sources need to change to allow for the kinds of homes that are already here. There was a little bit more of a mixed bag on this question, and even before the presentation started, I mean, this is the kind of thing that any public body wrestles with, right? You make a public funding source available. What is your threshold of what you will allow that use for, right? Everybody wants the most bang for the buck, right? So even if you had a million-dollar trust here, would you allow a million dollars to just go to building one unit of housing, right? So funding sources, like I said, perhaps the state, because most times with the competitive subsidies that the state has, you know, you're probably looking at like a $50,000 threshold to try to get that subsidy in place. $50,000 is not going to do anything here, right? So you would need to decide your own threshold for, if you did develop a capital bond program or something like that, what would you be willing to have as that threshold in order to develop that unit? Strong disagreement with the statement, there are already sufficient choices of homes and apartments for those who would work here, who work here or would choose to live here. And also strong disagreement, not as strong, there are housing needs in town, but it is not up to the town to solve. And with that, I am going to turn it to my colleague Bryce.
So for the real estate transaction data, we relied primarily on Warren Group, which is a proprietary data set that is derived, I believe, from each municipality's.
Yeah, we go through the road street.
Yeah. And so I really kind of struggled here because Little Compton's small, and kind of splitting it geographically can become difficult. You can't really use census tracts, can't really use block groups. And so I just decided using GIS, just to kind of drop a grid pattern through the middle, and then just kind of then drop the transactions within the sectors that that grid pattern created. And so there were so few sales, I combined the sales from 2018 all the way to 2021, just to get a higher number. I adjusted all the prices to $2021. But you can see from just this brief map that there are sectors that don't show up because there were no sales, and then there are sectors that have one to three sales that, you know, the data's not as reliable. But you can see those darker sectors do contain more sales, and so kind of directing more attention to those, those areas in the ensuing slides. If we can go to the next slide, please. And so I looked initially at two different metrics, the first being that median year built, because we know so many homes, Rhode Island has some of the oldest housing stock in the nation. So many homes oftentimes are extremely old, requiring a lot of money just for upkeep, might not provide that safe and healthy housing that, that we're so fond of. But in actuality, Little Compton, those sales over the last four years, they represented pretty, for Rhode Island standards, new warehouse housing stock. You know, some of the post-war housing boom homes, and then above. We didn't get as many of the, the homes from, you know, the 1800s or even, you know, 1900. And then I looked at the average number of bedrooms as kind of a proxy for, you know, what we could imagine the occupancy to look like in these homes. as kind of a proxy for, you know, what we could imagine the occupancy to look like in these homes. And those really ranged from, you know, two to four bedrooms. Again, looking at the southern end of, of the town, you know, there's only a couple of sales that constituted those sectors. But in, in, in general, you know, we're hovering between two and three bedrooms. Were the primary types of homes. Go to the next slide. And so here I looked at the median sales price on the left. And you can see as those sectors are darker that constitutes, that represents a higher sales price. So those, those sectors at the, the northern part of town, you know, consistently had higher sales prices as well as that southeast sector. But there were those that had kind of generally, you know, they might've been around what the median single-family home price was for the, the whole town or just above. And then trying to get a rudimentary idea of, of what Annette talked about, where those value areas are, meaning that, you know, we adjusted the assessed price and we adjusted the median single-family home price and basically just looked at those sectors and how, you know, those prices interacted, whether that was, you know, we had a sector where there were homes selling for dramatically more than what they were assessed for or, you know, right around what they were assessed for or below. And again, it is, I just want to preface all of this analysis. It's, it's difficult to have really hardline takeaways when the number of sales is so few, especially when I'm divvying it, divvying the, the town up in this way. But you can see that that, that northeast portion was consistently above what it was assessed for, whereas that, that green sector in the center right, you know, consistently sold a little bit below. And of course, you know, to our point, we're using median figures for all this. So there were outliers. There were dollar sales of a million-dollar homes. And there were, you know, extremely, extremely expensive sales as well. But this is just showing kind of a glimpse into, you know, what an approach like this could look like. Obviously, with tax assessor data, with data that looks at the entirety of the housing stock within the town, you would be able to complete an analysis like this with a much higher degree of confidence. Looking at, you know, what is it, 90, maybe 89 sales over a four-year period? It's, it's a little bit more difficult. But the idea of trying to find these value areas, I think, is, is an interesting approach for the, the housing trust potentially to take and the town to potentially take. And then moving on to the next slide. So we understand, much like a lot of the other coastal communities, all the way from South County, you know, into Equidnic Island and in Little Compton itself, Airbnb, short-term rentals, whatever platform they're listed on, sometimes present a problem, especially to those communities that are grappling with affordability problems. Because for every short-term rental that, that comes online, it is essentially one less unit of housing that is available for residents for year-round occupancy. And so I provided two different looks at this. One being the map on the left, which is coming from a platform called AirDNA. And despite its name, it looks at all short-term rentals. You know, it could be Airbnb, Verbo, whatever platform. They're listed on, the same unit could be listed on different platforms. It accounts for that. But that should be closer to the whole universe of short-term rentals in, in Little Compton. And I don't know if we have the number placed in here, but it's right around 100, I believe. But visually, I think it fluctuates, obviously. You know, with short-term rentals, there's an element of seasonality to it. So I believe Little Compton kind of fluctuates between 70, 80, 90 in the winter months to 120. I believe the peak in the last four years might've been like 125 at its peak. But you can see, you know, visually where those short-term rentals are distributed. The map on the right provides us with kind of the same look at short-term rentals. This instead looks at just Airbnbs. But this is data that is basically scraped from Airbnb and its address level or approximate address level. And you're able to manipulate it and, and look at it a little bit further, which we did in the full report, as well as another map that I didn't include, which showed the, I believe, 39 registered short-term rentals. If, you know, whether you know or not, the, the Department of Business Regulation has set up the short-term rental registration platform. And, you know, anyone that has a short-term rental is now expected to register it with the state. So in the larger report, we explore that and kind of the difference between what, what the short-term rentals in Little Compton look like versus what is actually registered with the state. There are, there are municipalities in, in the state that are trying to really grapple with the proliferation of short-term rentals. Some do it through a variety of means. You know, the, the short-term rental has to exist on owner-occupied building, meaning you can't have an investor purchase a bunch of homes and then list them on whatever short-term rental platform they want and not really be a present, quite frankly, landlord. There's others that restrict short-term rentals just to residential districts, which is another option. It's probably not as pertinent to Little Compton, the two zoning districts. But there are a variety of mechanisms that, that can deal with, with this environment. Because again, when we're dealing with a, a small town and we're looking at, you know, 100 units that are being, you know, basically removed from the housing stock, that can present a real problem when every single unit counts to keep residents in town affordably and keep kids in schools. So there are definitely examples from Newport, Equidnic Island. At, as a whole, I think there are other towns along South County, Washington County, that are, are starting to approach short-term rentals with a little bit more vigor. I'll hand it back to Annette to kind of close out everything.
So in the full report, you know, I give you the links to these. Actually, these are clickable links even in PowerPoint here. You know, your planning board is aware of these. These are all best practices for growth in rural areas. They're not anything that you don't know. Compact development where you can, use of public buildings when you can, combination with conservation development when possible. So, next slide. So ultimately, you know, we would offer to devise, you know, those appropriate density incentives in designated areas where you can, whether you devise those densities at such a level that they can actually be subsidized for long-term affordability. That's something that you all can really debate among yourselves in terms of what number is really appropriate to have. You know, the, the resilience of long-term affordability is that you know that you have stock, whether it's rental or ownership, that is going to stay affordable to that low and moderate income, income group. In the longer report, I give you the HUD income levels. You know, generally, we're talking about, you know, a family of four being under $100,000 of income. If you're looking at smaller households, you're looking at incomes under $50,000 to $60,000. That would be what is considered low and moderate income now. Consider additional sources of revenue for the work of the housing trust. And, you know, some municipalities, like Charlestown, actually established a municipal bond. They voted on and passed a $1 million bond that has now actually gone on to develop housing that is actually on the Shanick Village border with Richmond. They share a little bit of a water area there. And it is, you know, age-restricted housing. And the, the value of that kind of a bond means that those other public sources, because these deals all need multiple sources, many of them have as many as 12. The bond helps fill that gap where the other sources may not be able to come up to the full value of, of the subsidy deal. Consider, and this is, this is a real conversation that the town needs to have, consider mutual purchases between the agricultural trust and the housing trust. Andrew was suggesting he's aware of the CPA program in Massachusetts where you can have a portion go to conservation, a portion go to housing. As I mentioned, I worked in Vermont. We have a similar program, Vermont Housing Conservation Board. If the agricultural trust is purchasing a property that has a building on it, maybe that building, you know, could be deeded actually to the housing trust. But that is a conversation, you know, for you all to have locally. I would really strongly suggest that you reach out to similar Rhode Island municipalities. New Shoreham has a very active housing trust. They also have an agricultural trust. They are also, as you know, the higher-priced market and also highly rural. The difference being is that they really are an economic powerhouse when it comes to summertime. It's a very different tourism market that they have that you do not have. Barrington, also another high-priced market, also very compromised by sea level rise. But, you know, they have, they capitalized a trust there with a philanthropic donation, which has gone on. And they actually have a very active board there. And then, of course, Charlestown, as I just mentioned. And then really holding townwide discussions regarding all of these approaches and what your residents would approve. I realize I failed to mention, but I think you're all aware of church community housing. They have, you know, developed a few of the units that you have here. Their model is very much in keeping with the town. It's just that the prices have made it such that they really can't do anything here. So if you do develop a program with the housing trust, I think Sue might even still sit on their board. And that is, that is actually a model that then holds affordability in perpetuity. Because what happens with those homes is that the land is held as a lease for 99 years and is actually, is actually passed, can be passed down to children. That is the model that I used to have in Vermont too, for my homeownership program. So we are happy to entertain any questions. I know we've taken up quite a bit of your time. And we will make all of the other documents available to Carol to share with all of you.
Thanks very much. Would you like to comment or summarize?
Well, I just ask that we make this available on the website.
Yeah, if possible.
Sure.
Yes, sir, the chair.
Yeah, my name, my name is Patrick Bone. And I would just like to thank Annette and Bryce for being here tonight. And I largely look at this survey in tonight's presentation as a culmination of an effort between the housing trust and Housing West Rhode Island, certainly the foremost authority in housing data and analysis. And very much this is the fulfillment of a directive in the 2018 Comprehensive Plan, which called for such a survey. And I would just like to again thank those members of this council who in 2018 had foresight to enact a measure whereby a certain percentage of building permit fees were allocated to the housing trust, the Affordable Housing Trust in town. And that we all look forward to working with this council and to any citizens who would like to further the means of the diverse needs of housing in this town. But thank you very much.
Thanks. I would say that in our modest efforts, our nine units, of which six are more recent than the other three. The six that are more recent took advantage of density incentives, multiple sources of revenue, did not involve mutual purchases, but I applaud that as.
And it was an existing building, was it not?
It was. It was an existing building and then acquiring other property, or the adjacent property. But you've, and of course, the townwide discussions, you've, you've captured, I think, very well here what it is that we need to do to take a next step. Because we need to begin to think in ways perhaps that we haven't before. And perhaps it's just possible somebody might know how to do it better than we. We don't think that very often, but, but we might, we might be able to. No, I'm being facetious, but we, we are anxious to, to, to get past nine. I'll say it that way. And, and we think that there's a way to do that and it involves many of these that you've outlined, so.
And again, I would encourage outside of the nine, you know, these other strategies.
Right.
You know, ADUs could begin alleviating, you know, probably a lot of worry, you know, for some of those older residents who express concern about whether or not they can stay here in town. And, and possibly the ability for their children to stay in town because then the children get to be in the house, so.
Right. All right. Any other comments from the audience, questions? Yes, sir.
Will these materials be accessible online on the tablet site?
Yes.
We'll put them there as, as in the appropriate subset of the, of the website. Thanks, and we'll renew our. Yes, ma'am.
Can I just ask, is this completely separate from Section 8 housing or Rhode Island housing?
Yeah, so Section 8 is, you know, actually, you know, a federal program that was established, you know, back in the 80s. There's project-based Section 8, which there are a lot of, you know, dense high-rises all over the metro area of Providence. Those, Project-Based Section 8 doesn't exist anymore. You, you can't build a new Project-Based Section 8. What Section 8 largely is now are housing choice vouchers, which are portable vouchers. So Section 8 is often used as a catch-all to describe anything that is a long-term affordable home. So inasmuch as some of what we're talking about here might be long-term affordable, there are those homes, but I'm also arguing for a diversity of all of your housing stock that would allow for, if you will, what's called natural affordability, but marketable homes that would not have a deed restriction, but would be affordable to people who earn less than $100,000.
And this would be subsidized now? So it's still subsidized?
It would depend on all of you, right? I mean, I, you know, depending on the community, you might be able to build modular homes. You might be able to build tiny homes. You might be able to use, you know, technology that's available today that would create a kind of a marketable home that would just sell, you know, for under $250,000, right? Which would not require a subsidy. But that would require, you know, certain densities and areas of town where that could actually happen.
Sometimes the subsidy takes the form of modification to ordinance. For example, we extended the business zone in the case of the properties on the southern, the, yeah, southern end of Willow Avenue and thereby gave the opportunity for higher density to be allowed in that, in that unit that was constructed. So it, it's being creative about what might constitute something that makes it more attractive or more, more buildable. I guess I'd say it that way. All right, anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for, for an education and we appreciate it very much, Annette. By way of announcements, just two observations. We've had during this week, actually, two opportunities that only come along once in a while. We had the opportunity to be at the Public Safety Complex with a number of our first responders who were specifically, were specifically recognized for having saved the life of a surfer who quite literally drowned. surfer who quite literally drowned at South Shore and was, and was restored to life on actually two separate, two consecutive occasions. And when that happens, and it includes not only our public safety personnel, but people who are visiting here, people who are on the beach and happened to be in the right place at the right time, it is so absolutely gratifying to see how that, that can work. And I'll tell you, the gentleman who was saved was just, as you might imagine, he was virtually speechless, but he managed to say a few things. And, and it was such a privilege to be able to be part of something like that as a bystander and as bystanders who had nothing to do with it other than that's our folks and that, that's them doing their job. The second thing was this evening, I was not able to participate, but there was a, a Narcan training session.
I, I attended that training session and it's not a very long situation. It's pretty easy to understand. It was put on by Polly Allen and she actually gave us a couple little Narcan bottles to carry with us. It was actually Tony, Carol and I that attended, but if anybody else would like to get a group together, they can talk to Carol and Polly Allen would be happy to, to come and give a training session. It only takes 10 minutes, so it's, it might save somebody's life.
This is the emergency response to an opioid situation where you as the one person who might happen upon that has the ability to, to make a difference.
Right, I was also at the, the certificate awarding to all our firemen and one of our police officers and it was actually, what was it, nine to 10 people involved with it? Because it was citizens, there happened to be a nurse there from Hawaii that was just visiting the beach. There was a first responder from Bristol that happened to be there. There was a priest that was there that he said he was praying. So this gentleman, he really had the right people there at the time to save his life. So it was, we have a good crew. We have a very good fire and police department in this town. We should all be grateful to them.
Thanks. Any other announcements that need to be made? Next on our agenda is approval of minutes, first of our November 15 special meeting.
Motion approved in November 15, 2022 special meeting, unless anybody has any corrections or comments on.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And then the November 17 regular council meeting.
The November 17, 2022 council meeting, unless anybody has any questions or comments on those minutes. I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to accept. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. We have six department head reports, fire department, town clerk, police department, finance director, assessor and administrator. Three of those departments or, or leaders are with us, the clerk, the assessor, the assessor and the administrator. And any questions that you might have for them or is there a?
I do.
Yeah.
For the town administrator. The first one, the town hall restoration, I was reading about the handicap, handicap ramp in Vestibule. Can you just update us on, on that? Is that new? Is the handicap ramp new or we've always had one?
We, we always had one, except it was not in compliance. So no, we have one that it is in compliance and the Vestibule does two things. One, it provides protection for the inside door and also protects the folks inside the building from the cold in the wintertime because there is a spin of time that it takes for, you know, someone to access through the doors. And the Vestibule provides that additional protection there.
And our previous handicap ramp, what was, why wasn't it up to code? What was wrong with it?
At the very top, near the door, it was a ramp, you need a landing. So as the, the person accessing the entrance has the space where the, the motorized or the hand wield.
Wheelchair.
Chair, it's not tipping back, it will stay flat in the flat surface. That's what we call the landing.
Okay. Is there anything else that they, that has to be ADA approved for, for ramps? Does it have to be heated or does it have to be, is there anything else that they have for that?
No, but the Vestibule will be heated.
Not, not the ramp though?
No.
The other thing is, you're building and zoning official, it's come to my attention that, that we had two candidates help for interviews on Tuesday. And there was a, an interview with the candidates. Bob was at it and Carol was at it, yourself and Bill Moore. I, I was not privy to it. I don't think anyone here on the council was. I think going forward, I don't want to go back, but, but moving forward, you know, we interview policemen, firemen, front row library, the finance director's assistant, act trust, you name it, the housing trust. So I think it's important moving forward that if there's going to be interviews, that the five people on a council in this town have the opportunity to interview the candidates. So again, moving forward, other positions come up that we have, I know for the record, Carol, that we have the opportunity, I feel we need the opportunity to interview these candidates moving forward.
Noted, noted.
Motion to accept the November department head reports.
I don't, I don't think I made a motion or anybody made a motion.
Not yet, but you can make one as you want.
I'm, I'm planning to, but I'd like to speak on the. I'll second whoever makes the motion. Motion to place the Palmer head reports on file unless anybody has any comments.
Andrew already did that.
Right, so on the finance director report, as you all know, I've been, we were over three quarters of a million dollars in delinquent taxes. And for the last five or six years, I've been pounding on that to try to get people caught up and most you've heard me say already, it's not fair to people pay their taxes when they do. And some people don't pay year after year after year after year. So he did collect $24,515 for the month of October. I think we're down at 300,000 or around that number, three quarters of a million.
That is correct, yes. Not only that, we are actually sending notices twice a year now going forward.
I did see that notices did get sent out to the delinquent taxpayers. So I mean, we're not looking to take anybody's houses, but we, you know, just come in and tell us what the problem is and we can set something up for you if you can't make all the payments. I mean, I know that we're having, everybody's having a struggle, but just don't, just don't say, well, I'm not going to pay my taxes.
Thanks.
So we got a vote.
Any other questions on the motion? The motion then before us is to place the six reports on file. All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. First item of whole business is to vote on final consideration of an amendment that was properly passed through the process in which we have provided now with the assessor's impetus, a exemption for veterans and an exemption for visually impaired persons that is, affects their actual property tax rather than their property tax, rather than their property assessment. And furthermore, it updates the chapter 15 of the ordinances to remove the reference to board of assessors every place that it appears and replaces that with the town assessor.
I'll make the motion.
So I, so I work with Denise on this.
Let me just get the, the motion is to approve the, and adopt the amendments. And that's the second, yes, sir.
I think, you second it.
Yep, go ahead.
So I work with Denise on this because the, uh, real, real, the veteran's exemption would go up and down. I had a few people wanting to know if we could get it, so it would be the steady thing. So we increased it to $250. Same thing with the visually impaired and as Bob said, anywhere where it said board of assessors, we changed it to tax assessor, which is now the situation. So this did go to public hearing at the last meeting, so I guess we're just ratifying it now.
And implementing, right?
Adopt, yeah.
Right. Any further discussion?
Just, are we abstaining from this? Are we accusing from the veteran's exemption because we're veterans or do you feel we're comfortable?
I, I'm, I'm not affected by this personally. I'm not, I'm not.
This is below income.
No, it's not.
No, it's just if you're a veteran. All right.
You need not, or if you choose to.
I'm just going to abstain from the vote, just to be, just to.
The motion then is before us to adopt the change to chapter 15, all in favor?
Aye.
And one extension. So four, zero, one. Thank you. The next item is to Counselor McHugh's point, we're, we are receiving a recommendation from the administrator for an appointment of a building official zoning officer to fill the current vacancy. And as you well know, the, this has been the, perhaps the most often replaced position in the town government. And we, once again, believe we have a, a candidate who satisfies our requirements and the administrator will propose that to us.
I'm going to make a motion to let the administrator make an offer of employment and negotiate a contract to be ratified by the town council.
I'll second it.
And that's with Dean Simmons.
Right. And I want to, yeah, with Dean Simmons. We don't want two of them. I agree with Patrick, we've always brought somebody in front of us. And seeing as we weren't, one of this is very time sensitive. We all know that there is a lot of building, there's a lot of people that are looking for a building official to do stuff. We haven't had a building official for, he's been gone for over a month, so I think this was time sensitive. I did go down, looked both the applications, I did talk to Tony about it. I called up our previous building official, Bill Moore, and from what they told me, Mr. Simmons was the person to hire. He was, so, just, just a comment.
The motion that is before us to, to direct the administrator to negotiate a contract with Dean Simmons as the town's building official and zoning officer. Did you have comments?
No.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just, I'm going to abstain because he's the direct supervisor over the people who inspect my, my work, so I don't want a conflict, so I'm going to abstain.
You should have stayed home tonight.
I should have stayed home.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
That would be four ayes and one abstention.
I've got a question, I've got a question. Did we conduct an exit interview with the outgoing building official?
Oh, did we ever?
Oh, yes, we did. But we couldn't keep him.
But in terms of like figuring out why, why he left.
Yeah, quite, quite straightforward.
We shared, shared the results?
Right, pretty much, he actually was supposed to have applied previously, except somebody else took the position. But his, his main reason is the distance, the timing, it was just too much, you know, the traveling time for him. He says 15 minutes I can be at work when 45 minutes I go to Little Compton. That was one of his biggest reasons for the move. And of course, it does, please.
Does Mr. Simmons live closer?
He lives in.
He does, he does. He's actually here with us, we may want to recognize him.
Mr. Simmons, good to have you with us, sir. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, thanks. The next is new business in electronic communication from Lavinia Gadsden supplying facts about styrofoam and recycling and wishes to discuss cycling, recycling at the town transfer station. She's also provided us a late breaking second edition of her request, which I presume you'll incorporate into your remarks to us.
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Lavinia Gadsden, 165 East Main Road. I was prompted to contact you when I became aware that the two gardens clubs had taken 53 large bags of styrofoam to the Rhode Island Resource and Recovery Center and so got all excited, called Gary, and thought, why can't we do that as a town? So I contacted you with, with my great enthusiasm. However, I did further research and I now know that we cannot, as a municipality, take our, our foam to the resource recovery center. But further research shows that there is a possibility of doing something with that foam and I just would like to talk further about what we can do about recycling in general, styrofoam in this case. I know that Carol said that you had had some discussion about improving what we do at the transfer station and I just wanted to be made aware of what, what's going on in terms of those improvements.
To give you an idea of when we decided to maintain, the, the state went to mixed recycling and said, we don't care if it arrives with cardboard mixed in with cans and bottles, that's just fine. We, we maintained both services because for us, that by both, I mean, collect cardboard separately from glass and, and tin. And the reason we did that was we can compact the cardboard and for us, then that's fewer trips to Johnston, which is a significant share of the cost. The tipping fee is nothing because it's recycled, but the transport fee is substantial. So we have maintained that. I see that styrofoam or foam in general would be in that same category. Could we find a way that we could collect economically and then transport that styrofoam? I don't know, at the other end, unlike cardboard and tin and glass, those are all accepted, these are not accepted, so we would probably need to look for somebody who might take it elsewhere and then negotiate with Ryric to say, we're going to send our styrofoam over there, to which I'm sure they would say, that's just fine with us because we're not accepting it. So I think that's the initiative that we might undertake, is to see if there's some way that we can do that that's cost effective and, and helps our, our, the numerator and denominator of the fraction of our trash, which is recyclable. The problem with styrofoam, of course, is it takes up a lot of room and it doesn't weigh very much. And so it goes by weight and typically that would then subtract from our, our trash a rather modest amount of weight.
Sure, and I, I did find that there are some machines that you can get grants to purchase, which you can, you know.
Smash it.
Smash it. And so would take up less space. But I think it, it is something that, that obviously you're willing to discuss and we can do some further research. And I found that one of our, my friends, Jim Tomber, could probably help us out with some further discussion. And very briefly, can we get a, a receptacle for batteries at the transfer station? I know we have one here, but it would just make it simple.
I believe the administrator is ready to move on that.
I think Carol was going to say something, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to.
Because she's been more of a person that's been knowing batteries than I have.
Yeah. They're looking for a container that they can have at the transfer station that will keep the batteries out of the elements and right now in their plan, they don't have that container.
Oh, I see.
Once they get that, then they will move the batteries to the transfer station, but they just, that hasn't happened yet.
Okay. Well, thank you. I will continue to nudge you to be a green little Compton. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for the suggestion. The next item of new business is Rhode Island general law now permits what they have called cottage food manufacturers. It doesn't necessarily mean you have to live in a cottage, but it does mean that you don't have to have an industrial scale oven to bake bread and that sort of thing, is my understanding at least of it. So we've got this new law, we need to see how it may affect local zoning ordinances. Specifically, it looks like to me that were we to do that, we would have another new customary, or what's the term, home occupation? I don't think customary is the right word, but, yeah. So I would propose that we refer this matter to the planning board, which is the starting point for changing to the, changes to the zoning ordinance and have them tell us what it is we need to do to adopt or to incorporate this new state law into our process.
Second.
So that was my motion that's now been seconded.
Apparently.
Further discussion on that? All in favor?
Well, you proposed, you proposed it.
You notice I avoid saying that I moved so that you can move, but that's all right. Yeah. All in favor of that motion? Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is to appoint the town council member or in some cases, the The next item of business is to appoint the Town Council member, or in some cases, the Administrator, as liaison or have care of, or be responsible for interacting with various boards, commissions, and other entities. I'll just read you quickly. Right now, here is the lineup. And based upon your response, if someone wishes to replace someone else, we can talk about that. But right now, Counselor McHugh is the liaison of the Recreation Committee. I am the member in charge of Town Hall. I'd like to change that to the Town Administrator, not me. Counselor Galumbeski is care of Wilbur Woods. The Town Administrator is care of Transfer Station. Counselor Mataronis, the Harbor Commission. Counselor Galumbeski, the Planning Board. Counselor McHugh, the Conservation Commission and the Ag Trust. Counselor Iriate Moore, the Zoning Board of Review. Counselor Galumbeski, the Tree Committee. Counselor Iriate Moore, the Housing Trust. And Counselor Mushon, the Pension Committee. So first, by way of discussion, does anyone wish to not have the job they have, or have a job somebody else has? All right, then. I would move that these assignments, with the exception of the Town Administrator taking charge of Town Hall, be the incumbents, and that we not change any of them.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next is three appointments. The Town Sergeant, the incumbent and only person seeking reappointment, or seeking appointment, is Sid Wardell. The incumbent for Director of Social Services, and the only person seeking reappointment is Sue Sisson. The Appraiser of Damage Done by Dogs is Wayne Montgomery.
I had a verbal-
I was going to say, Wayne has not said he wants to do it. We've never let that impede us in the past. We've gone ahead and-
Motion to approve those three for those positions.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to appoint the three incumbents back to those three jobs. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Wayne. Now, consider joining the Community Septic System Loan Program through the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank and the creation of an onsite wastewater management plan. Counselor Iriate Moore asks that we put this on the agenda, and I'll ask for his comments.
So this kind of involves two asks here in this agenda item. First, the Community Septic System Loan Program was brought to my attention many times by members of our community who've needed to replace failed septic systems or cesspools. This loan program, which is currently participated by sixteen other communities around the state, helps provide very low financing to homeowners to repair or replace those systems. The great part about this program is that if we were to explore joining, we can set all the application terms and requirements for homeowners in Little Compton, unlike other statewide programs where they kind of tell you what has to happen. I've been in contact with a woman named Sydney Usatine from the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, which administrates this program. And she's offered to come give the council a presentation in the coming months, if we so care to invite her down here. You'll see on the agenda that I've also asked her consideration about how to proceed with the development of a municipal onsite wastewater program. In order to join the Community Septic System Loan Program, the town would first need to put together a DEM-approved municipal onsite wastewater program. This program, from what I can tell by other communities, can fit the needs of our own community. Some towns have created programs that establish septic system inventories, systems inspections, and septic pumping requirements. Other approved programs have focused on education regarding the maintenance and management of septic systems and encourage annual inspections. My point of sharing both of those is that we can make a plan that fits the needs of our community and have it approved by DEM without encroaching on homeowners' rights, which I know that, you know, has been an issue in the past when these things have come up. So overall, I think the Community Septic System Loan Program would be a great way for our town to help people in need access very low-interest loans to improve their homes and their lives. So first, I would ask that the council approve me reaching out to Sydney Usatine from the Infrastructure Bank and invite her to come and present this program.
I'll make that motion.
To the council.
Second. Discussion on that.
Yeah. This came about, I don't know, eight to ten years ago, this same thing, Community Septic System Loan Program. One of the, there was quite a few people in the community. As you know, most of the people have eglues. And a new system that you're going to be required to put in would be twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars for a two-bedroom system, one of the above-ground systems. And it was concerned, yeah, there'd be money here, but there wouldn't be money to pay for the whole thing. And if somebody said, well, your system's not up to standards, you're going to have to do that, they were afraid that there was going to be a problem funding it. And the other thing that came from the audience was, nobody wanted somebody walking around their backyard lifting their septic covers up to see what was going on with their septic systems because it was an invasion of their privacy. And they didn't want to be forced to do something that they didn't want to. But my recommendation for this, you can use this motion on the table, but this is one of the goals of the comp plan, and I was going to make a recommendation, the comp plan, get a hold of Allison Ring because I'm sure she's done many of these already, and put it in their lap because it is a goal of the comp plan, and they're the godfathers of the comp plan, so to speak. So it would be their purview to do that. Like I said, Allison Ring is, I'm sure she's done many of these already.
One of the things about this is, well, there's two things really. This isn't income. It has nothing to do with your income as far as the loan?
Well, so, as far as I understand from my conversations with the Infrastructure Bank, it's totally up to our community how we format the application. We can put income requirements on it, or we don't have to. We can, you know-
It leaves that up to us?
It's up to Little Compton, yeah.
And the other thing was, as far as registering your septic systems, the state just passed a law that when you put a new septic system in, it has, the town has to be notified now.
Yeah, you have to go, if you got to know-
But previous, last year, you could put a brand-new septic system in, the town wouldn't, except you paid that one-time fee, and then there's no follow-up to it.
You put one of the new systems, and the state requires you to have it serviced every four years.
What's that? Now, just to be clear, the motion that we're debating is the motion that says invite her to come, or invite the person to come, to brief us. And meanwhile, we have piece two, which I think is subject to what you have been talking about. And so I would call for a vote on the inviting of the Infrastructure Bank to come talk to us about what's available. And then let's undertake the other one, subject to the conditions you all have put on it already.
You know, Andrew's motion is fine with me. We're going to have somebody come down and educate us on what's out there. And then after we get that education, I'll make the motion that if we so think it's appropriate to give this to the Planning Board, along with Allison Ring.
Sir, I would suggest that we can do those in parallel. We can invite them to come, and while we're at it, we know we'll have to have a plan. So let's get them working on that plan. So the motion before us then is this invitation. Is that, we clear on that?
Yeah, before we vote on it, the literature that was given in the packet I found interesting. And I read all of the towns that participate in this. And New Shoreum participates in this, which is the closest that, you know, partners with us. And if you read, it's very short. They have approved OWMP plan, et cetera. And then it says, "New Shoreum's zoning ordinance specifies treatment standards based on location and soil conditions." So I think it's interesting to find out, you know, what their zoning ordinance says and what their standards are based on, so.
And that's something I believe that Allison has historically done on our behalf, is to come to us with a look across the spectrum of what people are doing. But we can particularly-
I mean, my guess is they're not popping people's septic covers in New Shoreum. That's my guess, if they're fully, you know, contributing to this. And what was that, Gary, nine years ago, you said?
Yeah, nine.
That's a long time. So maybe that softened and they've found ways around this. And I could be wrong reading this, but it looks like New Shoreum's got something in their ordinance.
I'm just saying what happened last time it came up. Those were some of the concerns. I'll agree with Andrew's motion. But I also think that, you know, it's up to the Planning Board because they're the fathers of the-
We haven't gotten, but I agree with you. Is it germane to the first issue or the second? That is, is your comment with relevance to inviting the briefing or implementing the plan?
Well, my comment is going to be to support each of those.
Please, go ahead.
But I do want to go up.
My name's Larry Anderson. I urge you to approve the motion. As Andrew noted, this proposal has been in the comprehensive plan for a good, long time. And Gary mentioned the cost of upgrading septic systems, which I think it benefits not just individual homeowners, but the whole community, especially when you take into account things like short-term rentals, future affordable housing prospects, potential density reports we've had from your Conservation Commission about our water supply. There's an obvious conflict or tension between the private property rights and the community needs. I think Andrew touched on this. I'm not aware of it, but I think that the opportunity arises to develop a community-wide plan that would perhaps be approved by the DEM, that would be acceptable to the town, that wouldn't necessarily require intrusive inspection instantly. It might be an opportunity. We have our GIS capability now. There might be an opportunity to incrementally improve our database on the basis of new construction, sales, and so forth, so that this could be implemented over time in a way that we, over time, have a good handle on septic systems in the crosstown without imposing on individuals. I will say, I have experience in Massachusetts with so-called Title V, which requires upgrades at the time of transactions if needed. I've been through this twice with family properties, and I can tell you that the cost of doing this can be a lot more than twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars. And so the real burden on this is on people of lesser means who desperately would want to do this, but have to dig deep to do it at all. So that a loan program such as Andrew suggested that's available now would be of most benefit to the people who need it most. So I urge you to go ahead with this.
Great. I couldn't agree with you more, Larry, because I think everybody knows I'm a big proponent of protecting our groundwater. And the first place you can protect it is with our septic systems, to have up-to-date septic systems, so.
Motion on the table? I'll call for a vote on the motion that would request the Community Septic System Loan Program spokesperson to come and talk to us. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. Now, I entertain a motion to refer to the Planning Board and the Conservation Commission a direction to return with their recommendation on an onsite wastewater management plan approach. And I would encourage them to use our town planner, our part-time town.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded.
Can I just comment? Yep. So I'm glad you included the Conservation Commission because I did have an opportunity to speak with the chairman, Don McNotten, and they have been discussing the, I'm sorry, I've got to look it up, the municipal onsite wastewater programs. And it's kind of come to their attention recently, and they've been exploring creating that program, so.
So we should have the report in a couple of days?
By next meeting.
Very good. Yeah, that's, I think it does appeal for the reasons cited to a host of issues.
And just to alleviate concerns once again, you know, I did have an opportunity to look at some of the programs enacted by other communities. You know, and as I mentioned, some go very far in terms of requiring inspections and, you know, pumpouts every year or two years. But others are, like Richmond, for example, you know, the plan only calls for education and outreach efforts to educate the community about how they can maintain their systems, and it recommends voluntary inspections. It's not a requirement by the town.
They just went out of like Tiverton and went gung-ho when they first tried it, and it backfired on them. They had people who were going to lose their homes over it. And they had to back up and recoup. Oops, sorry.
I just want to do, I want to do everything we can to possibly enroll in this program, but I don't want to, you know, encroach on the rights of homeowners and the people, so.
Here, here.
The motion then is, I mean, the matter is before us. The motion is as stated. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. The next is number five. Under new business, a draft solid waste and recycling service agreement has been provided by the Rhode Island Resource Recovery Corporation. And the request is that we consider implementing, consider executing this agreement.
So fifty percent recycling they want before we go over the cap?
Well, the news is that, not surprisingly, I'm not directly answering your question with respect to when you go over the cap. The problem is the cap fee now, over the cap fee now for a ton of material is a hundred and fifteen dollars a ton. That's above, as compared to fifty-eight dollars and fifty cents for, before you exceed the cap. So once again, the only way to not go over the cap is to not put so much trash in the bin. And the only way that we think we can do that is to put more in the recycle bin so that less goes in the solid waste bin. It's just-
Recycle, recycle, recycle.
I have-
Yeah.
Do you have any more questions for that?
Oh, no, I'm good.
I just have a few questions about this, the curbing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we on that?
I need a vote for the service agreement. Any further discussion?
I'll move, we accept it.
Second.
Service agreement for?
Solid waste.
For solid waste and recycling. We're on number?
Five.
Five.
I'm jumping, I'm sorry.
So, so I would like the motion to be, to direct the Administrator on behalf of the town to execute the agreement.
I think that's what I said.
That's exactly what you said.
Must be that I'm hard of hearing. The motion is made and seconded to execute the plan in accordance with the recommendation from-
I still don't think that Resource Recovery properly calculates our cap based on our seasonal residents. But I know you've gone down that road before.
They're happy to show you what they use for an algorithm. I would agree with you. You can find fault with it, but it's-
We fought with them for years about, you know, most of our, well, I'll drop it for now.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Now, Counselor. Are you on number six? Construction and Maintenance Agreement for Pavement Improvements? All right, sir.
Oh, you jumped ahead.
No, I didn't jump. We finished with number five.
No, no, no.
I jumped ahead.
I'm not jumping anywhere.
I was talking to Mr. McHugh, okay?
Hi, folks. Good to see you.
You want to read it? Go ahead. You got to say it first.
Discussion with Town Administrator Regarding Consideration of a Construction and Maintenance Agreement for the pavement improvements associated with the addition of sidewalks on the commons.
So I just have a question about, we have a document here. I would suggest everybody take a look at it if you don't have it. You know, it says, Rhode Island Department of Transportation submitted to the town a Little Compton Agreement to work with us, construction, curbing, and sidewalks on the commons. So the Beta Group Engineering is representing Little Compton with RITOT to ensure we develop appropriate plan and safety for the area. The cost to the town is seventy thousand dollars, which will come from the Opera Funds. RITOT is requesting fifty percent of the cost as an installment. And the Town Administrator was nice enough to break down the seventy thousand dollars here. And, uh, the town administrator was nice enough to break down the seventy thousand dollars, uh, here. Um, as I continue to read this, R I D, uh, R I D O T sent this to, um, town administrator. And it says, attached, please find two original of the construction and maintenance agreement for the pavement improvements. This agreement is associated with the addition of sidewalks on Commons Street in Little Compton. So we've already had, we've already said, we're gonna put sidewalks on the Commons. R I D O T says Commons Street. So I just don't wanna get off the wrong footing here. I think we need to be clear, um, what's going on, and I'll just continue, and then you can, you can do it. It also says, please return the executed agreement as soon as possible, as we need it prior to starting final design. So obviously, they don't have a final design. It is partial design, um, from what I can gather from reading this. And it goes on to say about thirty-five thousand, a half of the seventy. The actual construction costs will be based on the unit bid prices of the confirmed low bidder. The town will be responsible to pay for the actual construction cost associated with the project work, including, but not limited to any cost overruns or changes made to the project work. And lastly, it says, the seven roads in the project are East Main Road, Meeting House Lane, South of Commons Road, Little Compton. And then it goes on to say Fish Road, Highland Road, Route seventy-seven and Main Road, Suzer Road in Tiverton. These roadways being resurfaced to around eleven miles in length. Sidewalk improvements will occur on roadways to improve accessibility for pedestrians. It's a eighteen million, nine hundred and thirty thousand dollar project, of which the town has agreed to pay the state a sum of seventy thousand for the project work. And lastly, it says, the lump sum cost estimate for the various items of work associated with construction and installing, six hundred linear feet of sidewalk is seventy thousand dollars. So we have six hundred feet of linear sidewalk that we're paying seventy thousand dollars for, and it's broken down here. So I don't know what that looks like. I don't know how much road's gonna be taken away. I don't see anything about drainage in the seventy thousand dollars. I don't see it mentioned in any of the literature that I have here, or the data that I have here. So, and, and there's some kind of ambiguity of Commons Street or the Commons. Meeting House Lane runs down here, and then it stays to the south and goes by A-one Pizza, and straight up by the congressional church on the left, and you're looking at Wilbur's. My understanding, that's Meeting House Lane.
No, it's Commons.
No, it's Commons.
Okay, someone told me that. I won't say who it was. I didn't make it up. And the left, and the left of it here, which comes by here, is called Commons.
Both sides are.
It's all Commons.
Okay. So the question I would have, where does Meeting House Lane end?
From the state D O T perspective, when you repair Meeting House, you go from West Main Road to South of Commons. That's how they consider Meeting House Lane.
So you concur with what I just said, then? Meeting House Lane runs all the way to Wilbur's?
Runs all the way to Wilbur's. On their terms, you need to speak D O T when you're speaking to the D O T. That's what they call it. We call that the Commons, and we call this the Commons. And we don't call it School Street, which would probably remove any ambiguity, but we insist on saying it's the Commons. So we understand what they're saying. But back to your more important point about why we're doing what we're doing. We have historically, whenever the state has come in and repaired the Commons, we have then come along after or before that and repaired the portion that is adjacent to that, which constitutes our parking areas and that sort of thing, the end of the new ramp, that, that sort of thing. When we do that, we invariably end up with a seam that runs down the middle of it, and to your point, takes stormwater and runs it down, down the street and dumps it into the stormwater collector. This project, for which we have not yet seen the final drawings, they have asked us to participate in by agreeing to, to have our piece of it be part of their bigger picture. And that's why they want us to participate. Once, uh, participate early. Once they integrate that all, we should get a drawing that shows us just exactly how all of that out there is gonna look, including any sidewalk that's gonna be placed in it because we wanted it there, any storm drain that they put in that, that is their responsibility, because it's mostly been generated by this, by the street itself. So I acknowledge that we don't have a finished product, but neither do they yet. They're saying, tell us that you're in this with us, and then we'll proceed.
Yeah, I think it's, it's reasonable and it makes sense that they're gonna pave, you know, these, these roads, you know, East Main Road and Meeting House Lane.
We'll see.
And the Commons Street, and all the Commons. And I think it makes sense. We say, hey, we wanna put sidewalks, and we wanna make it better for the pedestrians. Since you're doing it, you know, we wanna get about, that's, makes sense. It's reasonable, you know? I just don't want, you know, I wanna be clear with RIDOT. Um, I know we have Beta Engineering as our spokesman that's dealing with RIDOT.
That's correct.
So I just don't wanna see this, I don't wanna see anybody, people living on these streets that are gonna have problems, or they'll take away their land, or it's gonna go, I wanna know what it looks like. You know, um, so.
I, well, a couple of things to clarify. One is the Commons Street, you're right. They keep addressing, they wanna give something in addition to Commons. They think it should be a road, street, something of sorts. And I've had that conversation with them, and I'm gonna ask them to remove that. And in terms of taking a land, they will not be doing that, because it'll be on our side. This is, will start by the community center, and it will stretch all the way down to the school. Um, so they may narrow the road a little bit. Uh, well, actually, the, the state has additional land, okay, or space unto the lawns that we have all the way down. So they certainly can expand on that, or they can reduce a bit of space on the other side from the parking, which they rely on us doing also the parking lot, and removing the traffic from the road.
And how about the other side? Commons, the other side?
The other, the other side, they will not be doing, they'll be doing just curbing, but not sidewalks on the other side. The sidewalks will be strictly on this side because of the school, school safety and pedestrian safety. But it would not be considered for the other side.
Well, I don't think that's clear in any, any of this. To me, anyway, it wasn't clear.
Well, but to your point, as far as, uh, you know, engineering, you are correct. At this point, they added thirty percent. They will, they go with three levels. They go thirty, sixty, then ninety percent of the engineering. Uh, and they intend to have that done by November of next year, the ninety. The sixty will be this spring.
So there'll be curbing on both sides of that, that area over there?
On the other side, no. One side only. We'll be completing the curbing that exists already around Pike's Peak to the church. There is a, a short span there that there is no curbing there.
Interesting.
And you put it down for me, too. Thank you. Uh, hi, I'm Leslie Fox. I live at fourteen Commons, which is the south side.
Are you sure?
I am positive. All of us on that side have the street address of the Commons. And, uh, also, my other point is that when they rep, uh, RIDOT repaved Meeting House Lane, they stopped at the Brownell House. They did not come all the way up. I, somebody needs to clear that up with them. I do wanna have a better understanding of really, is there a holistic approach to improvements to the Commons? Um, it's wonderful to have the sidewalks put in, uh, terrific to have the paving finally redone. Really looking forward to that, although it's another year and a half, I think, or a year, until that begins to happen. But I'm really concerned, the south side has, is in far worse shape than the north side of the Commons, as far as the street goes. The erosion and the drainage problems over there are pretty serious. And to hear that curbing might only be done on some of that, but not all of it. And I'm not hearing anything about pedestrian, pedestrian improvement on the south side. There's not enough room for a sidewalk. I completely agree. But there needs to be a flat area on the far south side for people to walk safely. And since I live there, I constantly see people walking, um, uh, both up against traffic and with traffic on that same side, very few, because there's really no place to walk on the church side, if you know what I mean. So we need help over there. And I would like to hear what the town council is planning to do as far as improving that side of the street as well.
Yeah, I, I agree. That's south side. So there's nothing in this, in this plan for the south side of Commons?
The state, that's really up to the state there. The part why we engage in here is because of, uh, draft, uh, you know, pedestrian safety due to the school and all the public buildings that we have on this side. As far as for the other side, as, uh, Leslie already pointed out, there is just not enough span there. What they intend to do, if they put up the curbing, which now, as you know, there is so much erosion there, because with our curbing, people are just parking and actually destroying the conduit that's there. And that's why it has not caused some of the lightning on that side. So there is not gonna be enough span there, what they intend to do, my understanding, in conversations with them, is they'll put what's called a Cape Cod curbing on the side of the residences, right along there. And the Cape Cod curbing, pretty much what it does, it prevents the erosion and re, and contains the water in the road.
Cape Cod curbing on south side?
That is an asphalt term that is, in my opinion, really inappropriate for the Commons. You know, the Commons has a lot of historical value. We need to take care of it. There should be curbing on that side to match the other three sides of the, of the triangle.
That makes sense. Are you talking about the Cape Cod curbing on the south side of the Commons?
That is correct.
And that's part of this plan?
Uh, no, not ours, that's theirs.
That's part of their plan?
We have no responsibility for that piece there, at least we haven't engaged in conversation. Well, I shouldn't say I have, but they just said it would just be impossible to put it there.
So RIDOT has a plan for the south side of the Commons Road?
Correct.
Well.
Well, they, they have thirty percent engineering at this.
Right. So I think that's something that we need to stay engaged with, with Beta, about the sensitivity of that side, and what we would like to have done there, or some options there. I don't know Cape Cod curbing, if it fell on top of me, so I don't know.
It's, it's an asphalt slope, a little nothing.
I don't know.
And it doesn't provide drainage.
But I would, we'd definitely like to see it, feel it, look at it before we sign off on anything.
If you go, if you drive through a whole measure, you will see there has been an extension there, what's called.
I'll check it, I'll look at it.
So I do think it's inappropriate from appearance on the, um, on the Commons, and that we can do better than have the state put in something that's really not going to help us in the long run. Once you put in asphalt, that's it. It's not going to come out again. So let's do this right from the start and encourage the state. Now, interestingly, I've, um, had a conversation with somebody from RIDOT who checked with the project manager and said that they are committed to doing curbing all around the Commons. So I'd really like to get the right story. What is the plan? Really get some coherency about all of this, and make sure that this plan is comprehensive, that it's not favoring one side versus the other. So the storm, or the lack of storm drains on that side is causing the erosion. Every time it rains, it just gets worse and worse. Very, um, pothole ridden, the whole bit. So, um, it really needs attention over there, and I really hope that you all will help to make that happen.
We do not have a problem in representing to the state, to D O T, what we would prefer to have. Our leverage is less only because we own, we, the town, own this piece on which we're proposing to put curbing in a sidewalk. We don't own anything over there. You, you citizens that live there own up to the state road, and that's it. But that does not stop us from saying, from an aesthetic view, standpoint, from a water management standpoint, we have the following concerns, and we'd like to address those. We also have a senator who's very much involved in this process, who's always been a supporter of that and, and of our capability to, to raise these kind of questions. So we will certainly do that, and I'm, I'm grateful for your, for your bringing it to our attention. It's, it's not that we're ignoring it, it's that it's, in their view, none of our business. And so we need to make it our business, and we'll do that.
Right. Well, I would appreciate having the south side be the business of the town council as well, because, uh, the Commons is, it's a really unique place. There aren't many town commons, if any, like this. So I will do everything I can to prevent asphalt worms from going in. And I just, um, will there be a follow-up meeting? How will we find out at what point in time?
We'll get various, uh, issues of the plan. We got that all the time, except when rumble strips were put on West Main Road. We didn't get an advanced, an advanced version then. But they have committed to the fact that that's how they're gonna operate in the future. We're gonna get draft plans, then we'll get the next addition. We'll have the opportunity, and we can take the opportunity right now to say what we'd like to have over there, and have them say no, or have them say, to what extent are you willing to pay for it? In which case, we'd come back for perhaps more than the seventy thousand we're talking about, if we're doing it over there. But perhaps that's something that the town wants to be able to, to say the whole Commons is bordered by curbing. So that, that's the kind of discussion we'll have.
Right. And the drainage, which, um.
Well, I believe they've acknowledged that the drainage is.
I think that they have to do that, I believe, as part of an infrastructure project.
They don't, they don't, they don't deny the fact that there is a water, uh, stormwater problem there. The question is, can they, can they solve it? Can they put it somewhere else than where it is? And I, thus far, they haven't shown us that they can. But, but we will see. That's, I mean, we have a stormwater system that takes water from the, from the Pike's Peak area and transports it through the, past the playground and the school, and into the wetlands over there. And so that, that has existed for some time. I don't think that's questioned, or it's not an issue, so.
Right. It's just getting the water into that system. That's the problem right now. From Wilbur's on down, it's just running into the street. Um, my only other piece is to request, um, attention to pedestrian safety on that side, because there really, there isn't going to be a sidewalk. There's not room. What in the plan can improve pedestrian safety?
Taking, taking parking off the Commons is our, is our intention.
That's critical for one.
Taking some of the parking off the Commons, so as to have a safe place to walk. And that's what we believe the new parking area behind, uh, the former fire station.
Right.
Will provide us. Of course, people have to park there, but.
They will if it's close to the school. That's, that's why they park where they do now.
Right.
Okay. I, I, thank you for all of that. I can't stress strongly enough, um, you know, how this is our opportunity, really, to get this fixed. There isn't going to be another opportunity for a long time, probably, so it's important.
Yes.
Thank you.
Exactly right.
So what's required is a motion to allow Tony to commit to this.
The motion's gonna be.
Frame it again.
To construct the maintenance agreement to, to, and the pavement improvements associated with the addition of sidewalks of the Commons. That's going to, uh, unlock the, the money that needs to be sent up there.
Correct.
Yeah.
So he has to sign this.
But this is unique to this side. This is not addressing the problem that we've just been discussing.
Right.
But I'm sure with what he's heard tonight, he'll follow up on that, correct?
What I would suggest is to request them to come and make a, you know, a more comprehensive, uh, presentation to the council, you know, to address some of the questions that were raised this evening.
I mean, my feeling, I think all five of us feel this is important. You know, we want the Commons to be right, look right aesthetically, and the water to go where it needs to go, and people be safe walking there, because they're unsafe now, for sure.
So where are we?
Again.
I have one motion.
Okay, thank you.
You want a motion to sign this, to get this ball rolling?
That, that's what I would request at this point, yes.
Motion to allow the, uh, town administrator to, uh, engage in our I D O T construction and maintenance agreement for the Commons. agreement for the Commons.
Discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is a report from Secantet Associates on the condition of the public safety complex.
Motion to accept the report.
Motion's made and seconded to accept this report, any discussion?
Yeah, I mean, we got the report, where's it gonna go from here?
Many of the actions to correct these items is underway as part of our.
Yeah, I saw, I saw them doing something there yesterday.
Building maintenance plan.
Okay.
We'll, we'll keep you advised as to where we stand. All in favor of the motion? Aye, any opposed? Thank you. Sitting as the Board of Licensed Commissioners, the Little Compton Community Center has requested a one-day retail beverage license for December 16th and December 18th for holiday concert events at the community center.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve and seconded.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
A letter from Ed Maado resigning from the Little Compton Agricultural Conservancy Trust, recommending we accept with regret and post a vacancy to receive letters of interest for the unexpired term which will expire July.
Second. So move?
A motion has been made and seconded, I deserve further discussion, all in favor?
Sound like a motion to me.
A letter from the Rhode Island Fire Safety Corp, Safety Code Board of Appeal and Review, announcing the scheduled date of February 21st, 2023, for a hearing on a variance request filed for 40 Commons. Just by way of amplification, what we have requested is a variance for the lack of a sprinkler system in this assembly hall. We are pursuing two different avenues, one is this appeal, and the other is a definition of what, what.
Excuse me, sir, Carol, you all right?
And the other is, what alternatives might we invoke? So we have a, an expert that's assisting us, and both of these things are underway. The February 21st hearing will occur unless it doesn't, in which case we'll be able to prevail on written word.
Motion to place on file, second.
Motion's made and seconded to place on file, all in favor?
Aye.
Next is a letter from the Village Improvement Society, asking permission to use Veterans Field on Saturday, May 6th for the Secantet Plant Fair, and on Saturday, August 5th for the 78th Annual Chicken Barbecue.
Motion to approve, second.
Discussion on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks. The next is a letter from the Village Improvement Society, requesting the council recommend to the budget committee a stroke in the amount of $10,000 for the repair and maintenance of the Brownell House.
Motion to place this in our budget file, second.
Discussion on that, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Thanks. The consent calendar.
Motion place consent calendar on file unless anybody would like to pull anything for discussion?
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
And the payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Bottom line, those bills.
There being no further business before the town council, I declare the meeting adjourned.